Okay.
Did you see my license plate? It's pretty awesome.
She doesn't want to go ahead and be incognito at all.
No, I didn't know where to put my NRA sticker. So, the spare tire on the back. The windows are very small, so I can't.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to our regular meeting. Chino Valley Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
I think you might. Good evening. Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tur- uh Turner?
Here.
Almost said Turley. Mayor Croft?
Here.
Hello, Andrew. How are you this evening?
Splendid, Mayor. How about you?
All right, thank you. Uh, let's do it. First, let's start off with introduction, presentation, and proclamations. Proclamation acknowledging Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty eighteen. Could I have all the veterans in the room come up and join me in the front? Hey, take it easy on the Navy. Proclamation, Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty eighteen. Whereas, at the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month of nineteen eighteen, marked the end of the war to end all wars, so named because of the great slaughter and destruction. And whereas, on June one, nineteen fifty-four, Congress declared that Armistice Day should be Veterans Day to honor all who served in all the years to preserve world peace. On October eighth, nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D. Eisenhower issued the first Veterans Day proclamation. And whereas, the recurring anniversary of this state shall be commemorated, commemorated with Thanksgiving and prayer for all those who have served freedom's cause. We salute the members of the armed forces who are confronting our adversaries and who are, and we honor the name, the men and women who have left America's shores, but did not live to be honored as veterans. And whereas, to protect the nation they love, our veterans stepped forward. When the American needed them, most and answering the nation's call to honor decently and resolve, our veterans have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. Now, therefore, I, Darryl Croft, Mayor of the town of Chino Valley, on behalf of the Chino Valley Town Council, do hereby acknowledge November eleventh, twenty eighteen, as Veterans Day, and urge all citizens of the town to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through ceremony and prayers. Thank all of you very much for your service. We really appreciate it. We wouldn't be here doing what we're doing today without you. Thank you.
On behalf, on behalf of the American Legion, we thank you guys. Uh, you guys are fantastic. Hopefully, uh, by the next time the flags go out, that we will be able to get them out to Perkinsville Road. We haven't got them in yet. They've been ordered for a couple of months. They gotta be coming from a slow boat from China.
Oh, no.
Thank you, guys, and the town for what you do for us. And that's what we're here for, uh, is to support the town and the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on next to a presentation by Laura Norman of the West Yavapai Guidance Clinic regarding an update on the clinic's crisis stabilization unit and its impact on the community. Good evening, Laura. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm fine. I may date myself a little bit, but my father joined the Navy as a very young man in World War II. So, my father was a-
Thank you for his service.
World War II, yeah. Gosh, I am dating myself. Um, thank you, everybody. Jamie, am I ready to go?
Yes, you are.
All right, and I just, oh, look at that. Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to come on behalf of West Yavapai Guidance Clinic and give you an update on the crisis stabilization unit. And you're very aware of this project, because I've been here before. But it's been operational for more than a year now. And while it's based in Prescott Valley, it serves the entire region. So, I want to walk through some slides, give you some data, and keep you updated, so. So, I know you know who we are. Um, but West Yavapai Guidance Clinic is the largest nonprofit provider of mental health crisis and addiction services in this community. So, for your audience and those who are watching, we provide a wide range of services. Everything for, um, children, counseling, case management, things to help really get those kids who might be struggling back on track, to adults and senior programs. Do a little bit of everything, including we have a psychiatric hospital in Prescott Valley. We had that before we opened our crisis unit. We realized, however, that there was a missing link in the mental health care in this community, and part of it was centered around crisis services. When law enforcement encountered somebody who was struggling due to drugs or due to a mental health issue, their choices were often YRM-C, the emergency rooms, which provide excellent care, but psychiatric care is not their specialty. They want to work on your strokes and your bones and all those things, and let us handle the psychiatric care. So, uh, if it wasn't YRM-C, jail was the option, depending on what was going on, of course. So, we knew we needed to do something else to add to our continuum of care. These are some of the programs that we have at the clinic. Things like the Hillside Recovery Program, which is a twenty-three-bed residential program for adults struggling with substance use disorders. We help people get back to work. We have a program called Opportunity Knox that gets people job-ready. We have, um, counseling and case management. Case management means helping people set goals and stick to those goals. Twenty-four-hour crisis intervention, though, is what I want to talk to you about, um, tonight. And our service area when this clinic was created back in nineteen sixty-six was and still is Western Yavapai County. But people come to our crisis center from over the mountain and through other parts of northern Arizona for that level of care, and then go back to their communities for outpatient treatment. These are the figures through year one. We opened January twenty-one, two thousand seventeen. And these are our figures, uh, for or through that one year. But I actually have some more current data for you. Through October thirty-one, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight people have come to the clinic, or come to the crisis stabilization unit. Now, not all those people stayed with us in a chair or stayed in a bed overnight. Some of those were, I can think of specific examples. Mothers who saw something on Facebook and wanted to talk to our crisis counselor because she was concerned about whether there was some, an imminent issue there. A husband worried about wife who might be taking prescription medication in a way that was unsafe. So, it's really been a, a center where people can come in crisis, but also to ask questions and get support. So, nearly four thousand people through October. This data shows that law enforcement, including Chino Valley PD, that should say Chino Valley PD, um, brought three hundred and eighty-seven people through year one. But through October thirty-one, it was up to four hundred and fifty-eight. So, those were people that arguably may have been taken to jail, may not have been taken anywhere, or taken to the ER. YRM-C is showing good, uh, impact in terms of our services. People who do come to the ERs for a crisis related to psychiatric or substance abuse issues stay shorter periods of time because they have somewhere else to send them. And then, just in general, the numbers are down. Yavapai County Jail, um, is very excited with what we've been doing. This, along with a lot of other strategies they've been working on to reduce, um, the, the jail admissions, particularly for those who really don't need to be there. They're really showing that they're working. People come to us for a variety of reasons. Drugs and alcohol, yes. Alcohol, number one. That is still the number one, uh, most common substance we see. Meth and opioids, very common, too. People from all socioeconomic backgrounds. Mental health and substance abuse issues don't discriminate. The latest thing we've added is our paramedics. More than a couple hundred, the last number I saw was one ninety-one, but that was through August. Um, ambulance transports are being diverted every day from YRM-C to our crisis unit. So, out in the field, let's say, uh, law enforcement meet with somebody who is struggling with a substance use disorder. Um, the EMTs are called, they do their thing, and then they are able to staff with the hospital, with our crisis unit, and determine where the right place for that person is. And we've been able to divert many people from that higher, more expensive level of care, going to the YRM-C ER and bring them straight to the CSU. Not only is that a financial win, it's a quality and perhaps a long-term treatment win. In our crisis unit, we have peers. We have trained staff that work with people and try to engage them, uh, in long-term treatment. Not just addressing the crisis, but can we help you on that road to recovery? This is what the inside, uh, looks like. The top is our chair area. So, we have ten chairs where people can stay up to twenty-four hours, not overnight. Uh, but in a crisis, you just need a little extra time. The officers can probably tell you, out in the field, making a decision or an assessment in thirty minutes or an hour is tough. Give me four or five hours to sit with somebody and figure out what started this issue, what's going on. That is, uh, often all we need. Bottom right, you see our area where we have eight beds. Let's say somebody needs to detox. We need them about average length to stay there three days. We can put them in one of our beds. And on the left, you see, um, a nurse, a nurse practitioner in the area where our paramedics actually base, um, getting ready for admission. I just want to thank the town because, um, some of you and some of the law enforcement have been there from the beginning of this process, helping us with protocols, helping us, um, create a system and an opportunity for people to come to get help. Thank you for bringing people to us. Um, and that's really the end of my presentation today. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to, um, entertain it.
Questions? Questions?
No.
Doing a good job?
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It's a, it's a needed service, and it, uh, well, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. And it can, may I just give the number and the address real quick in case anyone would like it? You can find the crisis stabilization unit open twenty-four-seven, eight-six-five-five East, East Ridge Drive in Prescott Valley. And the crisis number is eight-seven-seven, seven-five-six, four-zero-nine-zero. And one final thank you, John Coomer is here tonight. He volunteers to serve on our leadership, uh, our board of directors for West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, and we can't operate without leaders like him, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Okay, let's go on to Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date, or responding to criticism. Is there anyone that would like to step, yes, or please come to the podium? Give us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Al Gibbons. Twenty-year resident here in Chino. Like, longtime Arizona resident. Um, have you got a copy of the handout, the photos?
Yes.
If you could look at that? There's kind of a problem with those starting up around town. Uh, when I moved here twenty years ago, when I had my house built, I asked the, um, code compliance person, the building inspector, "Hey, where do I put my regular garbage can? I didn't need one of these." It has to be around back, code says this or that, out of sight from the road and around rear of your property, that type of thing. Well, I, I see these popping up around town, and some of these in the photo are actually on your property, not their property, it's on your property. And it doesn't seem to matter, no one's doing anything about it. And the code guy checked for me, he says, "Yep, that's disappeared." They can put them wherever they want, except for the, on this public right-of-way, which some of these are. So, it's not being addressed. And the second problem is, it really kind of got me started on this. This is being dumped in the four-thirty, four-fifteen, four-forty-five in the morning, about a hundred yards from my house at another residence. And, um, so I called up that business in Prescott Valley and, "Hey, what the heck are you doing here?" "Hey, do you know it doesn't have a code against that?" And I checked with the compliance, and he says, "Well, we have quiet hours from twelve to five for the citizens, but not for businesses." And so, from those pictures right there, you can see there's about four different businesses. Theoretically, they could be here, your next-door neighbor with one of these in the front yard of your house. And if you've all heard of them, don't be fooled, they're quite loud. It's like a hollow drum. So, I was understanding, I was told that you're in the process of revising your codes. And, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, two things summary on that is the appearance from the road and the hours. Uh, I would think it shouldn't even be allowed until at least seven in the morning, um, on those kind of things, in residential areas, not commercial stuff. The second thing I want to bring your attention is, um, you can have as many cows as you want in a residential property in Chino Valley. They can be standing shoulder to shoulder, but you can only have so many pigs. But no limit on cows. And, uh, it's going to be a real problem in some properties. And then those cows are condensed down, they may have five acres. They'll condense them down, thirty or forty head of cattle, on two to two-and-a-half acres. Hundred gallons of urine minimum a month. You do the math. And it's all concentrated, you can't scoop it up, you can't shovel it up. It's just there. So, every time there's slow rains, or there's any kind of humidity, moisture, it just all comes alive again. So, it's just raw sewage. That needs to be addressed. There's, there's, that's residential areas, I'm not talking pure agriculture. Anything with a R in the, in the zoning is what I'm talking about. And I think those cattle ought to be restricted to, if you say so many per acre, I say it should be of the free roaming acres that they're allowed to roam in. If you have five acres and a guy has two-and-a-half acres of structures and barns and lawns and fruit trees, and you say he can have so many cattle, you're basing it on this five acres ownership. But what he's really going to do is put it on two-and-a-half acres. He's going to double it up. So, those are something I think should be addressed as well. The number of cattle, and then the actual usage acres, if it's in a residential area, not state land, that type of thing. Last thing, we've got a real bad fire hazard problem in Chino. Have had for years of the privately-owned land in the town limits that is not being mown, and there's no cattle on them to keep it down, or no goats. There's plenty of it, three or four feet high. Um, could be a potentially a big problem. Instead of Paradise, California, it could be Chino, Arizona, the right situation. June day, southwest winds, something starts out there about a roundabouts, further south one. It's going to be in Perkinsville Road before you know it, and through that whole corner of town. Um, Mike knows how to contact me if anybody wants to talk to me about it. I'd be glad to share you some more and give you more information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbons. We'll, uh, give you a response next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Yes, sir, come on up, give us your name, please.
My name is Dean Schlarbaum. I'm a new resident. My wife and I are new residents to Chino Valley from Prescott. Certainly not the only reason, but one of the reasons that Chino Valley was so attractive to us was the Chino Valley, uh, firing range or, or pistol range. Uh, I think it's supervised by the Prescotts, or was by the Prescott Sportsman's Club. Both my wife and I have Arizona Department of Public Safety concealed carry permits. I'm not armed. And we, we like to practice at least once a month. And, uh, when the Prescott Sportsman's Club was in Prescott, we would go about once a month, and it was a wonderful facility. They always had a range master. Um, it was a controlled environment and what have you. And as I understand it, there may be an executive session after this meeting with the council. And I hope that the council will do everything possible to keep the firing range out on Perkinsville Road open to the public. Thank you.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
S-C-H-L-A, R as in Roger, B as in boy, A-U-M, Schlarbaum.
Okay, thank you very much. You will also have an answer in the next council meeting. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to Response to the Public. Response to the Public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town, town officials address matters raised during Call to the Public at a previous meeting. We have nothing for Response to the Public. So, we will go on to Current Events, Sumories, and Reports. This item is for information-only. The mayor and any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events, or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation and information requested by the mayor and council will be made, and questions answered, and no action will be taken. I, I'd like to start it off real quickly. We've had a couple of great events, but put on by staff in town, and I'd like to thank them very much. Halloween night, as usual, every year, is really a fun time for the kids and everyone. Thanks for the folks that were involved in putting that together. It was, again, a super hit this year with, especially with the young folks. A lot of folks come, and we really appreciate that. And National Night Out, chief, you guys outdid yourself. Thank you very much for what you do. That was a great event, too. So, thank you, and on to your staff and everybody involved. Mary Lewis especially, I know she's really busy with that. Okay, I'm going to go on to anybody else in the council. Yes, Joyce?
In response to the, um, advancement of the flags, uh, Bob Ingram from the American Legion. We had got donations from Jeff Champ and the town to do that. We ordered all the equipment, paid for it, but the flags have yet to come in. But very shortly, they will come in, and we will have flags on the highway. If anybody drove up and down Highway eighty-nine this weekend, they will extend to Perkinsville. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank my three new members that came to our fiftieth anniversary committee meeting. We will be dark during December because everybody's busy. So, our next council meet, our next committee meeting for the fiftieth anniversary will be January ninth. And if you haven't come, we invite you to come and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Town manager?
Okay, are you ready for this?
I'm not sure.
I kind of have a few things tonight, so if you, if you'll just be patient. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is introduce our interim development services director, Martin Scribner. Mr. Scribner, if you wouldn't mind coming up and introducing yourself to the council. He will be our interim director for, um, probably three to four months. And, uh, comes from the city of Maricopa. If you wanted to say a few words, please, and-
Uh, sure. Good evening, uh, mayor and council, my name's Martin Scribner. Um, I have been in Arizona about, uh, three and a half years now. I, I live in the city of Maricopa and, uh, have been their development services director for about three and a half years. And I have about twenty years' worth of urban planning experience in my background from public sector to, uh, development and consulting. So, um, I'm here to help in any way that I can over the next few months while you kind of lead into getting a, a full-time development services director. So, um, I'm, uh, available in my office. Doors open if anybody has any questions or needs to talk about anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, and thank you very much for taking that position, helping us out. We appreciate it.
Okay, secondly, I want to talk about ours. We have a bunch of work anniversaries for both October and November. And because we have so many, I'll just really call out the ones that have ten years or more experi-, uh, ten years or more of anniversaries here working with the town. So, in October, we have, uh, Sherry Turner. She's been here thirteen years. Tiffany Rosendez, fourteen years. And Cindy Thomas, over in the senior center, thirteen years. And then for our November work anniversaries, uh, Steve Otis in vehicle maintenance has twenty-two years. Scott Bruner, here at the meeting, has nineteen years. James Club in our roads department has eleven. Michelle Codega is in our prosecutor's office, twenty-three years. Uh, Jamie Lewis, town clerk, twenty-three years. And Chuck Winn, our police chief, sixteen years. So, thank you to all these employees, uh, not just the ones who've been here more than ten, but all of them who've done a great job for the town. We have a great staff. Okay, then next, I wanted to mention that this weekend is the town cleanup. Um, so we have a dump day, um, on both Friday and Saturday from eight to three over at the community center parking lot, so I want to make sure that was noticed. And because we don't have another meeting, a formal council meeting, we have a study session on the twenty-seventh, but not a council meeting. Um, I wanted to bring up that on December eighth, we have a December to Remember that we're going to ask council to participate in. Uh, this will be in response to, uh, requests by several council members to kind of enhance what we were doing over the holiday season. I think you'll be happy with what, uh, both our recreation department and the Chamber of Commerce have done jointly, uh, for December. And, um, you'll, you'll be getting formal invitations on what time we'd like you to show up if you're available. But, uh, that's, uh, going to be a nice event we have over at Memory Park. Plus, we'll be doing flags up and down the highway. The, uh, American Legion was gracious enough to let us use their, where they have their poles, and we'll be putting some holiday flags up and down the highway as well. I wanted to mention also, uh, Friends of the Library. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to present this plaque for the Friends of the Library who have won an award for Library Volunteer of the Year.
For all those that are Friends of the Library, please come forward.
Well, you've got Scott here. We just want to acknowledge them formally that, uh, for all the hard work they've done for our library, day after day, anyone who visits our library sees them all the time up there. I know most of these people by name, and most of you do as well. Uh, these are not the only ones who belong to the Friends of the Library, but these are the, the ones who, uh, were able to make it to the ceremony down in Phoenix.
This is from the Arizona Library Association, twenty-eighteen Library Volunteer of the Year Award. Friends of the Chino Valley Library, Public Library, and those that keep the library going. Scott, thank you very much for all, and please, please congratulate everybody that does that, all your volunteers. Thank you very much.
Okay, this Friday, I wanted to mention that, uh, Chino Valley will be the host of the Greater Arizona Mayors Association luncheon. Um, we will be hosting that over at Granite Creek Vineyard. Uh, the mayor will be, um, hosting it on behalf of the Greater Arizona Mayors Association. So, just FYI, we should have between twenty-five and forty people there. Just different mayors from throughout the community, throughout the state will be there for that luncheon.
And you're all invited if you have nothing else to do.
You're all invited if you choose to, you know.
I always have a scheduling conflict when it comes to the vineyard. This is not right.
Well, we don't serve wine, if that helps, so.
Okay, I feel better.
We are keeping you out of trouble, that's why.
A couple more things. I wanted to mention that, uh, staff has, and the mayor especially, has, have been busy doing community outreach. I want to thank, um, Joe Duffy, Frank Marbury, uh, John Coomer, Jamie Lewis, uh, for the community outreach that we've been performing. Uh, we've been busy, and we will continue to be busy, uh, meeting with different groups to fine-tune our message that we will bring back to council in December so that when you do a call to election in January, you will feel, hopefully, well, better informed. Um, and lastly, I wanted to mention, um, that we will have an Economic Development Subcommittee meeting on Tuesday at four PM. So, for Chairman Lane, Councilmember Mendoza, and Mayor Croft, the three of you are on the Subcommittee. I just want to make sure that you are aware of that meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Chairman Lane won't be present for that? Will not, but Chairman Perkins will.
That's a gotcha. Thank you.
Chairman Lane won't be present for that? Will not, but Chairman Perkins will.
That's a gotcha. Mike, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and just more or less for council, we will be in the Christmas parade in Prescott on December first at one P.M. And all those that are looking for a ride, I will have the vehicle Friday afternoon and Saturday, we will be in the parade.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's go on to update on council's twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen strategic plan.
All right, so right before you, I have the strategic plan. And as you may remember, there are eighteen items in the strategic plan. So what I have done is just put all eighteen items on here and then like a percentage of where we're at. I don't know exactly how you want to approach this. We can go through each one. I think that would be the easiest way if you want, okay. So the first item was to continue discussions with the four private water companies located within Chino Valley and developing strategies for purchasing and increasing our service area right. As you are aware, you know that we have learned recently that through our attorneys, we have to go out for a vote to receive permission from our citizens before we can actually purchase any water utility company within our boundaries. So I do have the date wrong on here. The election is actually the twenty-first of May, not the nineteenth. But that will be, right now, we're looking at including that in the ballot language when we do a call to election. But that doesn't mean that we're not gonna continue on with some of the strategy that we're gonna look at behind the scenes. Next slide, please. Number two was extension of sewer and water at the Old Home Manor Industrial Park. As you're aware, we do have sewer and water to the lot line at Drone Junction and Road Euro Drive. We will continue developing options for economic development subcommittee and possible town funding as time goes on. Number three, outfit a second well to create redundancy in our water system. Vice Mayor Turner has given us some specifications on what that might look like. Public Works staff has contacted an engineer about getting that bid out, so that's in process. Number four, extension of sewer and our water in low-income or high-density areas. We haven't really done much on that, but Councilmember Miller brought that up at one of our last water retreats. And we talked about scheduling that for a study session after the first of the year so that we could work it into some plans for funding for the next year. And our public works department's familiar with that. Number five, a master plan for municipal facilities. We do have a three-member staff committee that's working on a facilities master plan. We're not prepared to present anything yet to council. I would look for that towards the end of this fiscal year, early next fiscal year. Our goal is to try and provide several different options and timeframes that we can start looking at funding some of that. Number six, asset analysis. This is a bad slide because they're both zero percent, just saying. Asset analysis of real property. We'll keep working on that with both a development services person as well as our water person. And same thing with the inventory of town wells and production levels. We've got a little bit of work done on some of that, but nothing that I'm ready to report yet. We talked about getting our utility committee revamped and, not revamped, but probably have a committee meeting in January and we'll start producing some of this information. And number eight, analysis of development agreements. Same thing, without a development services director or our water person, that's who I need to really take a look at some of these in depth as far as some of our water commitments. But we've got them all on electronic format, so we're, it's just gonna be a matter of getting the person attached to that. Nine, transportation strategic plan, development of funding options. I'd say the public works department has done a good job of developing that funding plan, or I'm sorry, strategic plan for our transportation, our road maintenance program. And we're right in the midst of all that right now. Number ten, renegotiate concessionaire agreement with Prescott Sportsman's Club. Don't want to go too much depth into that one. You know the draft agreement has been done. We were sitting and waiting for the group to come out and do the lead abatement, but I don't want to go into too much of that right now since it's in executive session tonight. Number eleven, economic development, develop economic development strategic plan for Old Home Manor Industrial Park. Staff is working on that. We'll give an update at next week's economic development subcommittee meeting. It is partially done. Number twelve, economic development strategic plan exclusive of the industrial park. That too is about twenty-five percent done. Staff is, will also be presenting an update to the economic development subcommittee. Number thirteen, rewrite of the town's unified development ordinance. Started making a little bit of headway on that. I do think now with the separation between UDO and some of the code, I think we'll have both those maybe starting to work parallel and simultaneously to get the property code maintenance up and addressed and implemented at the same time we start working on a UDO rewrite.
We need to put a deadline on that sometime next year or so. If you want to start in February, think about when you can have that finished. It's lingered out there a long time.
Okay, I'll talk with you offline on some of that.
Yeah, so get back to us with.
I think some of it's gonna depend on who we get to do it.
Yeah, I know that.
If somebody we hire can do it or not.
So once you find out and get that arranged, let us know some kind of date.
Right. Well, and I also think another thing you might be, if we can separate out all this property maintenance things, I think that's what some of the council wanted addressed as well. So we'll do that separately and I think that will move that forward.
Okay.
Probably before the UDO stuff. Number fourteen is create a planned area development for the industrial park. So that would just be doing a PAD out there for the industrial or the business park. Same thing, our economic development person has started looking at uses they do and do not want out at the economic development, or out at the business park and will be making recommendations to the economic development subcommittee and bouncing those off you and then we'll work them through our development services department. Number fifteen, exploration of RV park at Old Home Manor. We've talked to one person who showed a little bit of interest. I'm not gonna say it was anything that was promising. We will continue to look at that. We'll probably get more people involved in that so we can try and see if that's something we can market out there. Number sixteen, analysis of infrastructure at the industrial park and recommendations. Some of those items will be brought to the economic development subcommittee this next week on some areas that we're looking at, start getting that kick-started. Seventeen, with volunteers from the community, create activities, celebrate the town's fiftieth birthday in 2020. I'm personally not overly involved in that. Jamie keeps me in the loop on what's going on. I give her any help I can or direction. Obviously, Councilmember Best is involved in this, but we'll assist in any way that we can. And last one, additional code compliance officer to work commercial compliance. We have hired the additional person and I think in January, we will have code back in front of you for, with some things that we're working on and what we're, where we're heading and where council was initially wanting some of this to go. I think you'll be happy with that, so I think it got off to a little bit of a rocky start, so.
Questions from anyone? Thank you very much, appreciate it for the update.
Thank you.
Just so you know.
That's called, that's Jack's four slide limit.
You should've given me four items instead of.
You just need to condense, okay?
Okay, let's go on to consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may, excuse me, request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. This side, do you want, is there anything you want to pull from the consent agenda?
Not me.
Okay, then we'll go on and ask the town clerk if she would read the consent agenda, please.
All right. Six A, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen dash eight-five-five to rezone assessors parcel number three-zero-six dash two-three dash one-zero-one B. One point seven-four acres of real property generally located on the northeast corner of North Road One West and Reyes Road at nine-twenty Reyes Road from AR five agricultural residential five-acre minimum zoning district to SR one, one-point-six, single-family residential one-point-six acre minimum zoning district. Number B, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash eight-five-seven to rezone assessors parcel number three-zero-six dash two-seven dash one-zero-eight Z. Two acres of real property located approximately six-hundred-twelve feet north of the northeast corner of Red Cinder Road and Kachina from AR five agricultural residential five-acre minimum zoning district to SR two, single-family residential two-acre minimum zoning district. C, consideration and possible action to approve the financial report for the three months ending September thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. D, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen eight-five-nine amending Chino Valley Town Code Title Seven Traffic Code, Chapter Seventy-One Traffic Rules by adding a new section seventy-one point fourteen, use of portable communication devices and texting while operating a motor vehicle. E, consideration and possible action to accept the October sixteen, twenty-eighteen study session minutes. And F, consideration and possible action to accept the October twenty-third, twenty-eighteen regular meeting minutes.
Do we have a motion?
We do. Make a motion that we accept consent agenda A through F.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. When, I want to make a comment on that is the consideration, possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen eight-five-nine. That is a phone, traffic code, cellphone. So in the future, you need to be very careful. Any phone that you have up in your mouth, I think, when's it effective?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Any phone that you have in your hand, you can be cited for, you can be pulled over and cited and it's a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar fine. So it's coming. This is just a warning to everybody, please, if you're going to use a phone in your vehicle, please have it attached so you're not, it's not in your hand. If you're driving and you're observed with a phone in your hand, you're gonna be pulled over by a police officer and you're gonna be cited.
Also, Mayor, didn't that just go into effect for the county?
Yes.
This week?
The ordinance that we have came from the county. The county also, Prescott, I think, has done it. I think Prescott Valley has done it. So that's countywide that that is going into effect. So if you have friends out there that like to talk when they're driving, let them know, don't do that anymore. Get something that you can hold your phone so you don't have it in your hands. We don't, we don't want to find people, we just want to stop people from using their phone when they're driving.
Mayor Croft, our PIO just reminded me that that ordinance goes into effect on January one, rather than the usual thirty days.
Thank you. Matt, it goes in effect January one here in Chino. When's the county going to affect supervisor? November second. So if you're on the county, so they kind of come into effect different times depending on when they're adopted, so be careful around the county you can be cited.
Is it not true that because we are encompassed in the county, that a sheriff can pull you over after November second and cite you?
That's correct.
That's correct. Sheriff can do that, so. Okay, been a long time coming.
Please pull over and cite all the teenage drivers.
Eventually, they'll adopt it statewide. We're hoping that if the municipalities do it, eventually the state will get off their fanny and have a statewide policy for all. Okay, let's go on to action item number seven. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three eight three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive session. I'm going on to item one and it reads, public hearing and possible action to recommend approval of an application for Kimberly Stam for a new series twelve restaurant liquor license for Kim's Dinner, Diner, Biscuits and Burgers and More located at one-one-two-zero South State Road eighty-nine, Chino Valley. Ms. Lewis?
As you've seen, Ms. Stam has applied for a restaurant liquor license through the state and our staff reviewed it and everybody has signed off on it. The police department reviews it, the development services reviews it, and we went through all the legal posting process and we did not hear anything from the public pro or con, so.
Okay, we will go through this process in two parts. We'll hold a public hearing and we'll close the public hearing, come back and take a vote. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So we're entering public hearing now for a liquor license for Mrs. Kimberly Stam. Anybody? Yes, ma'am. I know you are, come up, Kim. You want to say something?
Thank you, this is Beth. She helps me run Danny Bee's and the diner. And I just want to let everybody know that all of our servers, all of our employees have just been certified with the good department through the ABC council for all their classes for alcohol training and everything, for the laws and all that. And I actually just got my first letter from Herb Carruthers from the Department of Liquor in Northern Arizona on my inspection for Lucy's and Danny Bee's, that everything was great. He came in, did a inspection without knowing, you know, so he sent me a letter today and I got that and everything was real good on those. So I have Danny Bee's fish and chips too, which we were approved for that last year, so number twelve.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right, I need a motion to close. Get your finger out.
No, 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 I was just pointing along.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I'd like a motion to approval of the license.
Okay, make a motion, recommend to approve for a new series twelve liquor license for Kim's Diner.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All against, no?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, let's go on to item D, consideration, possible action to transfer contingency funds in the amount of twenty thousand to complete the Memory Park Library Expansion Project. Mr. Bruner?
Evening, mayor and council. As you know, when we put together a capital improvement plan, we put this together a year in advance. With the figures we have to turn in a year in advance. And it's sometimes a little bit of a guesstimate, a year in advance and, but that's okay because we were finished with phase one and we are going to start phase two. And now we know exactly how much we need to deal with, exactly right down to the dollar amount.
So that concludes all the toys and stuff for the.
That's everything.
Questions?
Just out of curiosity, what was our percentage difference from what our original estimate was to what it is now to complete?
Mr. Duffy? I don't know what the, what the financial percentage would be.
He's carrying a six divided by three. Twelve.
Excluding the playground equipment, we're gonna be about, I think about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars total. So what it was. Right, right. So we're fifteen percentage.
All right, thank you.
And also, and I believe the last council meeting or the one before, we approved a bunch of playground equipment. Is that gonna be going to this area or that's a totally separate area?
Yeah, it's going, it's gonna be going in that area, but it's paid for with those donated funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ready? Make a motion to authorize transfer of contingency funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to complete the Memory Park Library Expansion Project.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries. Let's go on to the item A, the executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting and hold an executive session which will not be open to the public for the following purposes. An executive session is the item A. An executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three A four for discussion or consultation with the town attorney in order to consider its position and instruct the town attorney regarding town's position regarding a contract concessionaire management agreement with Prescott Sportsman Club related to management. related to management of the Chino Valley Sporting Facility that is the subject of negotiations. Item B, an executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three eight three for discussion or consultation for legal advice with town attorney regarding a proposed development. And item C, an executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three eight three for discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney regarding a letter filed with the Attorney General with regard to previous council action pertaining to Proposition one twenty-seven. Do I, I'd like to have a motion plus a five-minute recess before we go into executive session.
Okay, make a motion to move to executive session after a five-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Oh, democracy at its best.
Thank you.
Taking kids to soccer tonight and making dinner. We need more council meetings.
Mr. Kimberly?
That is the one I missed.
Do we need to record this, are we on?
My mic's on, this is on. She know, yeah, she was going in.
She's ready? All right, we have returned from executive session. We have given our attorney directions. I'd like a motion to.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Second.
We're not adjourning yet, we're gonna go out of executive session.
Sorry.
Make a motion, we, we go out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
My apologies.
You're just eager.